Member Alvarez.
Here.
Member Biancario?
Here.
Member Benanda?
Here.
Member Guardiola?
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Member Mailman?
Here.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member Roy?
Here.
Mayor Petty?
Here. Okay, we're here to review and conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year 24 with the public schools budget per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38N. So this is for the public to speak, not the school committee. So the public wants to just see your name, see your residence, and you're more than welcome to speak about the budget. We have the budget personnel here for any finance questions that are asked. And our first budget meeting, I believe, is June 6th for the school committee. Is your name, see your residence?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Fred Nathan Worcester. So over the last number of years between the city council and the school committee and all the politics of the city, we keep on hearing the term inclusion, 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 inclusion. Well, news flash. You're talking about laying off how many teachers? Even if you lay off one teacher, that's too much. But you're thinking about laying off, what, 60, 70, 80 teachers in total, maybe more? I can't help but think that the new superintendent has brought on a lot of administrative people. Now, I don't know how many people the former superintendent had working for her, but if you're talking $26 million, where has the money gone? Are you actually paying the people that she brought in 26 million, or is it just a combination of everything? And news flash, the whole idea of inclusion, when it comes to the layoffs, you're gonna even, you're gonna hear a stronger chant on it. I hate to be the bearer of bad news.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Anybody online? Is your name, see your residence, and budget, every item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Grace Slawoski. I'm a resident of Worcester, and I'm the parent of a kindergartner and a first grader at Chandler Magnet La Familia Immersion School. I was here a few weeks ago to speak about my participation as a parent in the budget process and really highlighted how inclusive and transparent I thought that process was. And I really still believe that. I think that this is an incredibly challenging year. It's a difficult situation, and we're not going to find answers where everything is the way we want it to be. But I also am here today because I recognize when we're making these hard decisions, we have to zoom out at that 10,000-foot level, but then we have to go back and look on the ground to make sure that we got it right. And so I wanted to give a little bit of perspective for the school that my children attend particularly, because I think that the impacts of the proposed budget will be perhaps unintentionally profound at our school, because our school functions a little bit differently than other elementary schools in Worcester. And I wanted to provide a little context as a parent of two students. So as all of you, I'm sure, know, our school hosts the dual-language program, as well as the transitional bilingual education program and the sheltered English immersion program. So in a sense, we have three schools in one. Also, last year, we merged with La Familia School, which was a huge effort. It took a lot of work to make that happen, and our community grew. So as a result of that, the teachers at our school need to have particular skills. They need to have language skills that other teachers don't have. We also have two literacy curriculums being taught in the same building, unlike other schools in the district. And this means it's a little bit more challenging for us to reallocate and move around classrooms. So while the math might look like an equitable distribution of cuts on paper, in practice, it means that in the second grade, there will be class sizes in the dual-language program with 27 and 28 students. And bear in mind, these are students that are acquiring a new language. In the SEI program, in fifth grade, class sizes will reach 58 students. And again, part of this is just because our school in particular does not have the same flexibility that other schools have to be able to redistribute and manage those cuts. I want to say that I've recognized that there are many elementary schools where you can't cut teachers, because there's only one teacher per grade level. But I still am here tonight to advocate for a second look at our school, for whatever we can do as a community to bring more resources to address this problem. And I also just wanted to take the opportunity to personally thank and acknowledge the teachers that my students have had over the past year. Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Allard, Ms. Cody, and Ms. Bowden, who have just been tremendous, incredible educators, have provided the highest quality of education for my children. I'm so grateful for them and the work that they do. I think as parents in a community, we want to be the wind at their back. And so if there's anything we can do to bring the resources to remedy this, we're here to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is your name, see your residence?
Hi. Hello. So I'm Sandra Losco, and I have two children, also at the Chandler Magnet La Familia School. And I'm here to discuss what we're all here for, the budget cuts that are impacting our school, specifically our transitional bilingual education students, which we know them by TBE. I have been a student, a TBE student myself, at Belmont Community School, so I really understand the impact it has on immigrant families. So our TBE classes are filled with native Spanish-speaking students who are new to the country. Families choose to place their children in this program for smoother transition into the new culture and language. The new recommendation is to transition our TBE students into dual-language classes. So this allows students to continue to develop their emergent bilingualism in reading, speaking, and writing. Sadly, the large class sizes for our dual program leaves limited to almost no space for our TBE students to transition into the dual-language program. This also means that TBE students would need to move schools yet again, and this time to their neighborhood schools, and they would not have access to the bilingual programs that we have at our school. There will also be less availability for parents to opt into TBE when they move into the district. Another thing about, that we noticed, was that we're losing two of our only Spanish interventionists. We have two, and they're both gone. Although we value all educators, as you can see too by Grace saying how wonderful our teachers are, these two positions are our utmost value to our school community. The Spanish intervention positions were created because of a deep need to help our TBE students and our dual-language students. They are there to reinforce the students' linguistic skills in their native tongue or to support Spanish, that Spanish strand. If our school's going to be the model for bilingual education, which we know works, then we deserve strategic positions that work for our population. Therefore, I am requesting that the administration give us pocket positions that our school desperately needs, positions that are eligible to teach bilingual education classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say a few words? Come on. Is your name, see your residence, and item number? I'm sorry, no. Is your name, see your residence, in the budget?
Buenas tardes a todos.
Oh, by the way, we do have a translator online, too.
Okay, gracias. So, buenas tardes a todos. Primero.
Good evening, everyone.
Primero me quiero presentar a ustedes. Es mucho placer para mí estar al frente de ustedes. Mi nombre es Sochi Paredes.
Soy Sochi Paredes, and first of all, I wanted to do that, introduce myself and tell you that I'm pleased to be here.
Ustedes se preguntan por qué estoy aquí? Por qué hablo español? También hablo inglés. Soy graduada. A mí no me gusta decir mi título. Soy graduada de cirugía dental de una de las mejores universidades de mi país.
I also would like to say that I speak the language. I speak English. And even though I don't like to say what's my title, in my country, I graduated from the top school university as a dental surgeon.
Me gradué con un 97% del 100% que es otorgado en la Universidad El Salvador. Muchos de ustedes probablemente no la conozcan. Es la universidad acreditada acá en Estados Unidos de Centroamérica, El Salvador.
And I graduated from one of the top universities in El Salvador. You may not know about it. And my grade was 97 over the 100% point that it's giving in this specific school. And it has the credential not only here in the United States, but in other countries as well.
Como todos los inmigrantes, vine a este país, ahora soy ciudadana americana.
Like every immigrant, I came to this country, and now I'm an American citizen.
Me siento muy orgullosa de este país. Me siento muy orgullosa del sistema que este país tiene. Y ahora yo me siento triste.
I'm very proud of this country and the system that these countries have, but right now, I feel very sad.
Y ustedes se van a preguntar por qué? Me vine de mi país porque el trabajo era escaso. El dinero muy escaso. Ahora veo los recién graduados, familiares míos, recién graduándose recibiendo sus títulos de maestras. Yo quiero saber a dónde ustedes les van a dar la oportunidad de ejercer.
And one of the reasons that I came to this country is because we don't have many jobs openings in my country, and the money, it's even less. Now, it's beautiful to see the first generation graduating from universities in this country. Some of them, I have to say, that I'm very proud to say that I have some of those graduating in my family. Some of them are graduating as teachers, and my question to you is, where are they going to work?
No tengo que mencionarles el budget. Leí el libro completamente. Entiendo todo lo que exponen. Entiendo que ustedes piensan que vamos a tener una población mínima de estudiantes, pero en este momento, la escuela que tiene el dual language, que son dos escuelas en uno...
And I'm not gonna talk about...
No voy a hablar del presupuesto. Yo he leído todo el libro con relación a ese presupuesto y sé...
I'm sorry. Sometimes I glitch.
It happened the same to me.
It happened the same to her. I'm not gonna talk about the budget. I have read the whole book. I understand. But I also see that you are expecting to have a minimal amount of student. I need you to repeat about the schools. About the schools, okay.
Ahora las escuelas. Tenemos, no tenemos una cantidad menor de estudiantes. Por qué? Ustedes se preguntan por qué? En los últimos días, la inmigración por el borde ha sido totalmente descabellada, que yo tampoco estoy de acuerdo.
And even though you're thinking that we're gonna have a minimal amount of the students, if you heard, as I heard, the crossing of the border has been increasing to the point that it's unbelievable. I cannot believe it myself.
Eso nos deja en una pregunta. A dónde ustedes van a poner a todos estos estudiantes, que en la mayoría son de habla hispana?
And my question to you is, where are you going to put all these students that most of them only speak Spanish?
También me atrevo a decir que nuestro presidente está trayendo refugiados de otros países, como son del Medio Oriente. Esta situación no solo se ve para los que hablan español. Me imagino que los intérpretes de árabe y todos los lenguajes del Medio Oriente han de estar en la misma situación que la escuela La Familia Chandler Magnet.
And I dare to say that the president is bringing refugees from the Middle East. So now, we're not talking only about Spanish, which is the school... Right now, we're not talking only about the Spanish-speaking students, but also other students are coming from different countries of the Middle East and will go through the same process, the same situation that we're going through at La Familia.
En estos momentos, la escuela está a su máxima capacidad. Cuando la escuela se unió a Chandler, lo que es Familia Chandler, veníamos con una alta cantidad de estudiantes y con una baja de maestros. Es decir, que tratamos de adecuarnos a Chandler, y los profesores hicieron todo lo posible de suplir todas las necesidades.
We know that the school is at its max capacity, and we know that when we joined with Chandler Magnet, we were already having less teachers comparing to the amount of students that we were bringing to La Familia, now La Familia Chandler.
Cabe recalcar que al tener menos profesores, vamos a tener cero vacantes para nuevos profesores que se acaban de graduar, que a mí me pesa mucho, y vamos a tener cero para poder aceptar a un nuevo estudiante, sea de la cultura que sea, porque ahora estamos procesando...
I also would like to mention that the teachers, even though they have the schools at full capacity, they are doing their best to accommodate the best way possible all the students. Now, with the cut with hiring new teachers, I'm sad to think that all the new graduates will not have a place where to work.
Muchos de ellos se han graduado para dar clases en español, esperando a venir a formar parte de este precioso programa que ustedes mismos dieron la oportunidad a formarse desde hace muchos años. Ahora ya tenemos en high school el mismo programa.
And you were the one who gave the chance to, the classes to be taught in English, and we have new graduates in Spanish ready to give classes, and not only at elementary and middle school, but also on the high school level.
Entonces, estamos aquí para pedir que nos ayuden a mantener un budget, or si podemos ampliarlo un poquito para este programa, sería fabuloso poder tener nuevos estudiantes, nuevas caras, nuevos padres que estarán dispuestos como yo, no solamente a ayudar a la escuela, sino también ayudarlo a ustedes, que están al comité de todas las escuelas de Worcester.
So we hope that you help us with the budget and even increase the budget in a way so we can be helped with this program. And these programs will have new faces, new parents, that are gonna be there not only to help the schools, but help here with the committee.
Gracias por su atención. Mi nombre es Sochi Paredes. Si ustedes necesitan algo, con gusto, estamos aquí. Somos parte de los padres, el staff, de la escuela La Familia Chandler Magnet.
Thank you for having me tonight, and we are part of the parents committee at La Familia Chandler's Harvard. Happy to help if you have any questions.
Please, thank you.
We just have your name for the record? Do you give a name?
My name?
Yeah.
Mi nombre es Sochi Paredes.
Hi, my name is Ashlyn Doyle. I live in Worcester. Next year, I will have two kids at Chandler Magnet La Familia, and I'm gonna talk about transportation a little bit. So the school day for the vast majority of children at Chandler Magnet La Familia starts on the school bus. We are a citywide elementary school, so about 75% of our students come from outside the Doherty Quadrant, and about 95% of our students are eligible for transportation. And so students are on the bus for a long time. They're coming from all over the city. Rides can be as long as 40, 50 minutes, sometimes an hour, and many of our buses are very full with 40, 45, 50 students riding on them. So as adults, crowded buses and long bus rides are hard, and so for kids, long bus rides and crowded buses are harder. So it's not surprising that our elementary school students get cranky and bored on the bus, which leads to behavior issues. The bus is where the tone of the day is set, and it's an extension of the climate and culture of the school. So it's frustrating for our students, for our teachers, for our administrators, that lots of times, the first interaction of the day is dealing with behavioral issues on the bus. And so I'm not naive to think that these issues won't happen, but I do think that long bus rides and overcrowding definitely makes it worse, especially when our kids age, range in ages from four to 12 years old, right? Developmentally, there's only so much we can expect from them without being able to have an adult there to reinforce those expectations in the moment, and ideally, that adult is not someone who is also driving an 18-ton vehicle at the same time. So adult supervision in the form of a bus monitor would help with the climate and culture on the bus and help keep our students safe. I hope this committee might consider allocating money for more bus monitors that could be assigned to particular elementary school routes fitting certain criteria. I'm also concerned about the freeze of the five vacant full-size bus driver positions for next year, and that it removes any hope of our school getting routes added to alleviate the full buses. If our citywide programs are going to be accessible to everyone, it is absolutely necessary that students and caretakers feel safe and confident in their students taking the bus to school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is LaShawna Fulton. I'm also a parent of two children at Chandler Magnet La Familia Dual Language School. So I'm basically here with regards to the budget to, first and foremost, revisit the promises that were made to, I'm sure, both schools, but at that time, I was one of the La Familia families. So when La Familia and Chandler Magnet schools had to merge unexpectedly, the administration had made some promises that we, as parents, and a lot of staff members who are not here feel have not been completely upheld without our community advocating in holding people accountable. If we were to be honest, without the extreme number of hours that were put forth from the administration, the principal, the assistant principals, the staff, the family members, our school would not have been ready for the first day of school. We recently had a merge meeting with Ellen Kelly. When you hear it out loud, it sounds pretty basic. When you see it on paper and you see the miracle that took place in order for our students to be in an environment that fosters success in learning, that was all done at the hands of the staff, the administration, and the parents. Specifically, one of those promises that were made to us was expanding the dual-language education. When La Familia Dual Language School was first opened in the fall of 2021, the district had made the decision to add another dual-language class and continue to expand a class each year. The initial cohort of students is now entering fourth grade, but an additional fourth-grade teacher was not allocated to the school. My son specifically will be going into fourth grade next year, and he will directly be impacted by this. We would like to see the resources that were promised to us for the program allocated to our school into the programs that we have there. We ask that our school committee share the results of the multilingual audit specifically around the TBE and dual-language programs, as well as the district's plans for these programs. I know last year, our school, we lost our building, so then we had to merge over with Chandler Magnet. Again, I'm going to keep emphasizing the administration, the families, and the staff. Although ideally speaking, it was two schools, we, as a community and as a family, have made it one. That doesn't take away the fact that we still need the resources that were each present at both schools individually. The only thing that's changing is the number of students is increasing. We also ask that you reinstate Cafe B meetings to help develop and encourage relationships with the district and dual-language TBE families and in between the programs that are currently at Chandler Magnet La Familia and also Woodland Street School. Thank you.
Thank you. Is your name, see your residence?
Sorry, say that again?
Is your name and city of residence?
Trevor Standish, and I'm a resident of Worcester. So I do not have any prepared remarks today, but longtime listener, first-time speaker, and I appreciate everyone's attention and time to focus on this particular topic. And so the school budget, kind of why I'm here, is I have three daughters, Worcester, one at Doherty, and then one at Chandler Magnet. And I'm here really to advocate for the proper allocation of resources towards the dual-language program, specifically for Chandler Magnet. Two years ago, we moved to Worcester, and we had the choice of really living anywhere in the country. And one of the reasons we chose Worcester specifically was because of the commitment, longstanding commitment to the dual-language program, as we just heard about the two schools, La Familia and Chandler, and the track record. You know, if you look across the state of Massachusetts, there's other programs. Boston Public has one. If you look at Lowell, they have a dual-language program, and several others sprinkled throughout the state. But Worcester clearly was the one that was shining through, and which is why we chose to move here. When you really get down to the microscope level, I know you have to make decisions with a telescope, but we're talking about one school in this particular case. If you look at those students who are the dual-language students, they're about to have a radical change in their curriculum and their day-to-day lives. And when I think about when I have to go home and tell my daughters, you know, when I make a commitment, I have to adhere to that commitment, because if not, I'm gonna have trouble at home. And I, you know, when I think about the commitment you all made to the dual-language program here at Worcester, I think you need to ask yourselves, are you going to feel comfortable with the way that the classrooms are set up next year? Especially for those dual-language learners, because we said we're turning this into an opportunity for you to learn and grow in a written and a speaking vocabulary in two different languages. And now we're saying this actually might no longer be an asset, but this could be a liability, because we don't have the proper resources to teach you, to help you, to encourage you, and grow. And I would hate for that opportunity to be stripped away next year, so I'd like you all to reconsider the proposed budget for the dual-language program and really think about that on a day-to-day basis, when those students do show up. What kind of environment do you want for them? Do you want, you know, 30 kids in one classroom? I'm not really sure how much can be learned with 30 kids in a classroom. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Randy?
My name's Jessica Buske, and I'm a resident of Auburn and a speech-language pathologist in the Worcester Public Schools. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my students with disabilities, many who cannot advocate for themselves. So that's really like my role and important to me, that I advocate for these students, some that are very minimally verbal. I'm concerned that it appears that the majority of the cuts are to special education and the impact that this might have on the students. Special education cuts, it seems like it's almost targeted to the students with disabilities, the students with autism, the students that are struggling to learn to read, that are supported by the learning disabilities teachers. These are the students that need the most supports and take the longest time to recoup from loss of skills. This might only be, you know, we don't know how long this is gonna last for us. It's just a one-year thing, but for these students with significant disabilities, the impact could be for years. That's why we offer, that's why we provide things such as ESY, because they can lose the skills so quick, and it can take so long to regain those, and you can start to see... And you can start to see other concerns with behavior and other things that really impact the students. I also work at the transition program and I'm concerned that they are, it's one of the largest alternative programs in Worcester and we work with students 18 to 21, all with disabilities. Many who are very medically complex and medically involved and have significant disabilities. I'm concerned that there's consideration to remove the program coordinator position from this program because there will be no administrator, no supervisor, no coordinator to oversee in the building and these students have significant needs. They require individualized health plans, behavior plans, all these needs. And who's gonna be overseeing that and making sure that these students are, you know, having... It's not only just the instruction, but it's like medically involved things too and who's going to be overseeing that and making sure that everyone's doing what they're supposed to. And just in closing, I feel that we need to better support our students with disabilities and special education really does improve climate and culture. There's a direct correlation between learning to read and crime, the pipeline to prison. I'm sure you've all heard that. So we really just need to, I think if we're prioritizing climate and culture, we need to be preventative as opposed to reactive responding to crises. We need to prevent those by evidence-based practices.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Do we, do we have anybody online? Nobody has their hands up? Does your name and city residence?
Good evening, my name is Ruth Rodriguez-Faye and I'm a resident. It's taken me some time to share with you because this is really sad. Some of you know, I was the first school community liaison for the Worcester bilingual program. So I have been in this community defending my Latino community students. And as we look at today, the majority of students in the Worcester Public School are Latino. So I just wanna give you just a little history. I was part of the group organizing the community and came to the school department asking them to build a two-way bilingual school where students can learn not just... What used to happen before is the students who didn't speak English were so made, you know, and taking away the Spanish. So our community felt that a school that continued their own language and learned while they're learning English. And so the district agreed with us and they started building the school. They chose a school to house it where the majority of students were white. And then I get a call from the administration saying, "We're gonna have to find another school because the parents there don't want their children, with those children." That, I know that some of you don't know why the only bilingual school in Worcester is called Chandler Magnet. Because Chandler Middle School at the time was moved and that building was empty and that's why the school was built there. But we have been fighting and think about this. With the transition of bilingual law in Massachusetts, Worcester chose to start the program a year before. I was hired as a school community liaison. Do you know that the federal government for seven years provided the Worcester Public School 100% tuition for every student in the bilingual program? Every student in the bilingual program. So we were bringing out, you know, and even though that was happening, teachers, bilingual teachers, were hired as long-term subs with no benefits, even though they were getting money from the federal government. I once asked the district, when we asked for funds to do some program in the school, "Oh, we don't have it." I said, "What happened to all the money you got from the federal government?" "Oh, that went into the general fund with the city." So I'm just saying, right now, it's saddening to hear people talking about Chandler Magnet because you are under a federal mandate. We went to court in Boston and you are under a federal mandate to provide bilingual education. And it's very clear the way that you're supposed to be doing. And it's not happening and no one's holding you accountable. So my community is going, Ruth, what's going on? Why aren't the linguists and the engineers receiving the services that they're supposed to be issued? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does your name and city of residence?
Good evening, my name is Michelle Afrié, I live in Worcester. I have three children in the Worcester Public School system. One is two at South and one at Arts Magnet. So I'm not actually sure, this is my first school committee meeting. I'm not sure how it goes, but I have some clarifying things I'd like to make sure that people understand. I will say, in my day job, I'm responsible for enrollment at an institution. So I understand numbers, so I'll give you that to start off. The first thing I wanna better understand or have people understand is that there are 1,100 less students in Worcester Public Schools than the previous year. So if I understand correctly, that budget or your budget is based on those numbers and they have since gone down. And if there is an increase, for example, from people at the border crossing, then the next year that you would get an increase in the budget. Is that true or false? And I don't know if y'all can answer or not, I don't know how this works. But that's something that I think that people need to sort of understand is how the budget is built and on what enrollment numbers and that we're actually have less students. What I would say that works for me and my institution is data. Please follow the data. Behind, you know, I think there's a lot of emotion and people have real connections to things here. But I beg you to follow the data and best practices. I understand that we as a, as a community recently went through a strategic plan and that plan was very inclusive. I myself attended many meetings around the strategic plan and I would hope that we would stick to it because that's what we bought into. And the last but not least on, on special education, I don't know a whole lot about it, but what I do understand is that caseload ratios are smaller. So we may be losing teachers, but our, our students, what is the impact on students in caseload? Thank you.
Thank you. See, nobody else, you can't tell online, nobody has their hands up, so... Okay. So we're gonna be, the first meeting I believe is June 6th for the budget. I know everybody listened intently what he had to say and we'll take that to heart and we'll take a look at it and... Okay, so, so thank you for coming out tonight, much appreciated. Again, our first, 4 o'clock, you can watch it on Zoom or on TV. So if you wanna watch the budget meetings then. So the motion is to adjourn, all those in favor, opposed, so order.